Good evening. It is 7:01 on March, April, May, June, July, August, September, October, November 2018. I would like to call the College Place City Council meeting to order. If we would all please stand for our pledge of allegiance and then Ms. Nyhavings can provide us with an invocation. So, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dear Heavenly Father, we're so thankful that we can come and do the business of the city. We're thankful, Lord, for our wonderful staff. And especially this week, we thank the veterans, Father, that have served so beautifully and wonderfully. We ask that you would bless them and their families. We thank you, Lord, in Jesus' name. Amen.
It's now time for a public comment. Anybody wishing to address the College Place City Council on items that are not on the agenda? If you'd please step forward to the microphone, state your name and address. One more time, anybody wishing to address the College Place City Council on items not on the agenda, please step forward, state your name and address. Seeing none, we'll move on to the consent agenda item. I'd like to approve the agenda for this evening with two corrections. We'd like to move item 3.03 to 3.02, that is, with the local office for Mr. Norman, the head of Basin Disposal's annual report, and then move item 5.03 to 5.01, the Walla Walla InterKy Agreement with Mr. Wazitello and Mr. Shawah, to 5.01. With that, the season's consent agenda is approving the agenda for this evening. Approve council minutes from October 23, 2018. Approve council minutes from the workshop on November 6, 2018. Approve an annual work crew agreement with the State Department of Corrections. Approve the purchase of a fire vehicle for Chief Winter and the August 2018 check-in financial reports.
And what did we accept the consent?
Oh, I left out, excuse me, the absence of Councilman Sherman, who is apparently on the beach in Mexico.
Oh, wow.
It's been moved by Ms. Nyhavings. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been seconded by Ms. Selby. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. We have three presentations this evening. We have a presentation on Gold Star Family Monument. Ma'am, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the council. My name is Penny Lindgren. I'm here representing the Gold Star Family Memorial Monument Project and the board chair for that. This is fairly new. Oh dear, she handed me a paper. And with instructions. This is a brand-new project. It was conceived in July of this year. The city of Walla Walla has given the grant for the monument, which is terrific. We have an in-kind donation from a local electrical company to do all the electrical lighting and everything at the site, which is a substantial contribution, as you can imagine. And I've learned, since I started this, that a lot of people don't know what a Gold Star family is. So I thought maybe we'd spend just a moment talking about that. Are there any Gold Star families here tonight? So a Gold Star family used to be Gold Star Mother, was one of the early organizations formed in 1928. Gold Star family is a family who has lost their loved one during a time of war or military conflict. Surprisingly, there are many more Gold Star families in this valley than you would think. The official number is 26, just in surrounding county and four in Milton-Pruymore area. Since this project was announced, it's been in the newspaper. People have been contacting me, emailing, phoning, and there's more. So I think by the time we get this project launched, we probably find at least 10 additional families. And of course, there's all of the deceased members who are no longer, their families are no longer represented. So the Gold Star Family Monument was conceived by man by the name of Herschel Woody Williams. He's 95. He's the oldest living Medal of Honor recipient. I met him earlier this year, and he is a force to be reckoned with. So let me tell you a little bit about Woody. There he is. He travels over 200 days a year. About 2010 is when they started the monument project. He was so thrilled with the first one, he says, "I think we should have one at every state." And so far, there are, let's see, we'll see a map a little later on. There's 46 monuments dedicated, and there's 49 in progress. I'm going to give you just a little brief history of Woody and how he was the recipient of the Medal of Honor. He went down during the war to enlist, and they said, "Well, you're too short." He's five foot six. And he was so disappointed, so he went back to driving cab, and that was his job during the war. He was delivering the telegrams for the death notifications for veterans' families, which made a real imprint on him. I'll tell you more about that later. So a little bit later, he went down again, and they said, "Well, you're tall enough now, so you can go in." So he was trained, and trained in the Pacific, went to Marine Corps in California. They called those the Hollywood Marines, as opposed to the parasita Marines. Always a source of contention among the Marines. He was present at the Battle of Guam when they invaded there. And that was not terrible. But then they went to Iwo Jima, and they sat in the ship for several days, waiting to get onto the beach. The Marines were trapped on the beach. They couldn't move forward. And they finally got onto the island, and Woody was trained as a demolitions expert and flamethrower. That was his specialty, and he had six people assigned to him. They were finally able to move onto the beach, but they didn't make very much progress. This is about February 20, 1945. And they finally could move forward a little bit. They made a little bit of ground. I think they captured the first airfield. There were two airfields on Eagle that they wanted. And they were trapped again. So when they grouped again that night, and he looked for his comrades, they were all dead. They were all killed. He was the only one left. So his commander said, "Well, you know, how about, do you think you could take out those pillboxes that are holding us back?" And that was up on Mount Surrabachi. And there were a number of pillboxes up there, full of Japanese. And so Woody was assigned, he says, "I'll try. I don't know, but I'll try." And they armed him up with flamethrower packs and supplied men with him. And he went up and continuously attacked those pillboxes over four hours. And the men who were accompanying him were killed. They would assign more men. He would go up, take out another pillbox, throw charges in the pillbox, and he cleaned them all out. He told me himself, he doesn't remember getting in and out of the flamethrower equipment. He says, "All I know is that somehow I just kept going." So because of that, they were able to break through there and get to the airfield on the other side. I may have mentioned that he's the oldest living Medal of Honor recipient. There was one slightly older that just died recently. So here's the map. Like I said, we have 46 monuments dedicated. Those are the Gold Stars. This map is not up to date. It's changed dramatically in the last two weeks. And there's 49 in progress. And you see our little star, then we attempt to point, oh, look, there it is, Walla Walla. Get our monument up. It'll be the first in Washington State, which is a huge deal. And we will really promote that as the first in Washington State. You can see that there aren't any in the western states in this area. Now, right up there, there's one in Forks. They filed two weeks after we did. I know the people who filed, and it's a very interesting thing, but we're going to beat them on this project. That's what the monument looks like. And I brought a miniaturized version with me tonight. This is the exterior, and that's what's facing the council. You can see that. And the cutout of the soldier looks backwards to you for the salute. But when you go on the other side, it's in the correct position. You can see here. And these panels are customized to the local community. And I'm going to leave the monument tonight if you have a chance to look at it. This one has a picture of the Blue Mountains Forest. This one has an outline of a family. Our board hasn't determined yet what the family piece is going to be. This is the patriot piece of that particular monument. They chose the Iwo Jima monument. And then this is sacrifice. So we will determine what those additional pieces are in the monument. So we needed a place to put it. City of Walla Walla said you can have the site that was designated for the World War II monument, and that's what we've got. So if you're on the corner of Dallas Military, Dallas Military goes this way, no, I'm sorry, goes that way. Myra goes that way. So Dallas Military that way, Myra that way. And this is the area that we have to place our monument there. City Council of Walla Walla has blessed it, and so we're all ready to go on that, which is a wonderful, wonderful boost to the project. So monument's designed. We've got a place to put it. So what happens now? We're in fundraising phase, and we're going just as fast as we can to get the fundraising going. We've had several contributions. I've asked for some substantial contributions in the community. I'm hopeful that we will get that. And I understand that the city of College Place has funds that they can designate for this project, which I am thrilled to learn is a possibility. So I would like to make an ask this evening that the city of College Place contribute $10,000 to the monument, or an amount that you feel is appropriate for your budget. But we'd love to have 10,000. I think that kind of nears the gift of the city of Walla Walla. Here is all my contact information here. And you can see our board members. Oops, sorry, did the wrong thing. I think I did the, thank you. There we are. Thank heavens for competent help.
You have no idea.
Our board members, we have three Gold Star family members on our board. Nancy Boudreau is right here. Her husband was Major Boudreau, was killed in the Philippines about 26, 27 years ago. She has never been recognized as a Gold Star family member. Apparently, the Air Force doesn't do quite as good a job as the Army does. Gil Alden is a chaplain of the penitentiary, also U.S. Navy, I believe. Some of you may know Greg and Susan Fazari. They're doing a big push through Gonzaga University just this week in memory of their son Matthew. And Dixie Ferguson is with the American Red Cross. She's been enormously helpful in introducing me to everybody in the town. So with that, I won't bother you further, but do you have any questions about the monument or the project, or anything that I can help with? And the clerk has additional handouts for you, a brochure, my contact information, and so forth.
Ms. Nyhavings? The, excuse me, the Gold Star family, the person that was killed, the veteran, didn't have to live here, did they? Just the families? Did they have to be a resident up here?
This is in honor of all Gold Star families, and we anticipate that this will draw from throughout southeastern part of the state here. No, they do not have to live here, and the monument is not personalized for the individual because we have Gold Star families dating back to the Civil War. And so, and we will continue to have wars. So there's no place on the monument to be able to accommodate specific names. Now, the World War II, and as you know, they have the actual names of the people from our community, but that was a beginning and ending time. So this honors all Gold Star families, and it will be an anchor for Gold Star events. There was a feature on the Today Show, I think, this morning, on a Gold Star event and how people are pulling together all over the country and add meaning. So it will bring people from all over.
Any questions? Thank you very much. If you would send us a letter with your request?
I will.
Thank you so very much. And the model will stay there through the meeting, so if you'd like, take a closer look, please.
Yeah, it's inscribed on the back, so if you want to look at that, too. Thank you.
Thank you.
Chief DeMaurice, I believe you have a swearing in?
I have a swearing in, and I'm very excited to do it. This is Ron Nordman. He comes to us from the Washington State Patrol. He's spent 28 years with the Washington State Patrol as a state trooper, serving our community. And we were very fortunate to have Ron apply for this position, and he worked his way through the process, and I was able to give him a job. And he's going to continue to serve our community very well and more broadly out there. So thank you very much for being here. All right, so we're going to swear in. All right, I'm going to have to steal a little water here if you wouldn't mind.
Why don't you bring him around to you around this?
Okay, let's do that. All right, get all up close. Can everybody see your pictures? All right. Raise your hand. You're going to repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Ron Nordman.
Do you solemnly swear?
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution?
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States?
Of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws?
The Constitution and laws.
Of the state of Washington?
Of the state of Washington.
And ordinances of the city of College Place?
And ordinances of the city of College Place.
And that I will faithfully and impartially, and I will faithfully and impartially? Enforce the laws?
Enforce the laws.
As a special enforcement officer?
As a special enforcement officer.
To which I have been appointed.
To which I have been appointed.
Congratulations. Anything you want to say?
No, I'm just thankful to be here and very fortunate to be here very much.
And he brought his white TJ, too, so.
So, thank you.
Thank you for sharing TJ.
Thank you.
Yeah, we'll keep him away from him.
Thank you.
Thanks, and you got a board with your assignments to forget? And while he's doing that, for the council members that don't know, we are doing No Shave, No Remorse, raising money for cancer awareness. And the officers have personally raised over $1,000 so far, so we're really happy to do that. So I can't keep a quiet with Mr. White, but I'm sorry.
How do we contribute?
Send it to Chief DeMaurice?
How do we contribute?
Yeah, so I'll just send you a link, and then you can go right to our webpage, and you can contribute right to it, right for the College Place Police Department webpage. And we are in competition with the sheriff's office in Walla Walla PD. We're smaller force, but we're near.
Okay. So is there going to be a prize for the best beer?
That's a great idea. I think I'm winning.
Mr. Hartwig, Basin Disposal Annual Report.
My uncle's health is where everybody lives.
That won't take long. I'll just turn it over here to Derek Dietrich here. He's here from Basin Disposal, and he's here to give the annual report.
Mayor, council members, Derek Dietrich with Basin Disposal, and I can introduce Dave Batwell. Have you seen him before? He keeps me in line and helps me with those projects. With that, I always appreciate the opportunity to be here once a year, more if required. So the presentation will really have two major points. One, we'll briefly touch upon recycling. As we know, last year, that was an active decision, so we'll briefly touch on that. And then the focus will be on unlimited collection, which is the new provision of the contract that's in place. With that, let's see if I can run this. All right. Okay, briefly, recycling market. It continues to be a, let's just say legislative topic in Olympia that will take some speed in this session. There's a lot of people with a lot of answers, and it's going to take a while to sort out. The short answer is, it's kind of stabilized at a really high price. Markets are moving. Capital investment is moving, and it may be three to five years before things settle into whatever the new normal is. And so, anyway, I just wanted to give that brief update on what's happening. I do support the council decision to kind of sit back for a little bit and see how it settles out, and I think that's a good maneuver. And my message to council members, either just need to watch and monitor, I will give my feedback to the city, so decisions will be made. And certainly, if there's any questions, reach out to me, and I will look for answers that I can. So that's a brief recycling overview. And before I move on, is there any questions on recycling?
The acronym's MSW and RCY.
Yep. MSW, municipal solid waste, and RCY is what I use for recycling. And so what that means specifically is, right now, it's $122-ish to process recyclable materials, with a lot of it still being disposed of, not locally, but once it gets to be into the chain. Because, and this is important, I'll repeat it, China has since March exited the market. They consume 50% of the world demand for recyclable materials, so 50% is now off. As a result, the cost of the process goes up, and a lot of it actually does get disposed of.
So the recycling, at $122 a ton for recycling, does that then, for those that they don't recycle, does that then dispose over into another $90 per ton to get rid of it?
Well, in the case specific to this community, what used to be recycled, that $122, is now ending up in the garbage cart for $90. So that's the comparative that is there. I always like to put that out there. Here's what the comparisons are. If it's a social goal to continue recycling no matter what, that's perfectly fine. Here's what the cost is. But I always put it in comparison to what's disposed of. So that was the intention there.
And about 50% of the recyclables are being disposed of?
Well, the 50% number is no longer being purchased. When China left the market, 50% of the demand for that material is now gone. And as a result, there's not a home for a lot of the material. And I use the word menu. What's happening now in many communities, and no doubt this will come out through the legislative process, hopefully will, is a new menu. And that new menu isn't going to be big, it's going to be small, with the intention to focus on primarily domestic recyclables and the recyclable commodities that do have a use. As opposed to before, the goal was to have a really big menu, and unfortunately, a lot of the stuff is no more recyclable. So that's, that's in relation to this loss of a certain demand. So that, recycling equipment, in a nutshell. And as usual, I overrun my slides. I talk too much.
I overquestion.
That's okay. With that, that gets into unlimited garbage recyc, or garbage collection. And so, as you know, at the beginning of the year, we entered into a new agreement. The primary change with that agreement was unlimited collection. And as with any new program, it's not new to us. We've been doing it for 40-plus years. We're real comfortable with it, but it is always a reminder and humbling that when you enter a new community, there's some work to be done. And so that really is my report here, and certainly my request of the council to provide me feedback as to how it's feeling, is it being utilized, and are we doing a good job? And with that, the point is, hey, let's make it simple. Every now and then, a household will produce extra garbage. As long as we bag, box, bundle it, put it next to the cart, our job is to pick it up for a one price. Volty items, refrigerator, a couch, that one, we like to call it in because it'll require a different piece of equipment, and so that way we know to run and pick it up. And then additional carts for minimal charge. The whole idea is to provide a system to capture the solid waste as easily as possible without extra charges and that type of stuff. And the bottom line, specialized disposal, freon-containing items, we do pick it up for free of charge, but if there's an item to, in this case, the freon, to pay to get it evacuated, then we pass that to host there. So that's, in a nutshell, the unlimited residential collection service. And before I go on to that one, let me ask a question. How is it perceived? How well do we think it's working? And we can have some dialogue and make sure that I'm doing my job.
I appreciate your opening comments about that we're still in this staging area. I was kind of under the impression previously that perhaps we had, we had done this for a year as far as stopping the recycling, and now there was a consideration of going back and doing onsite, or that's not the right terminology, but onsite, let's say, recycling. To your, to your last question, I've been very, very pleased with it. I've utilized the additional pickup, but sometimes you forget that that option's even available when it comes to large items. And it's been, staff has been really easy to work with, and I, you know, and what I'm hearing from others, it's been, it's been nice. It's been like you stated, everything from a sofa to, to you name it, and they come by and pick it up. And so, yeah, but I personally, and the people I've talked to, have been very pleased with that so far.
I'd like to hear that. Thank you. And we probably could do better education. We certainly did try. And anyway, and we have a great relationship with city staff, and so as things develop, and if we realize that we didn't educate enough, we're certainly here to continue to do that. Now with that, I have notes at the end, but I'll jump in there now. We did a quick analysis of how much solid waste came through. And there were, honestly, can't remember the numbers, 800, 900 tons came through, and roughly half of that could be attributed to the recycled commodity. Obviously, now that's going into the solid waste stream. But even above that, there has been a slight uptick in the solid waste. So basically, 9%, 10% increase at the residential level. Half of that could be attributed to recycle. The other half would be utilization of the unlimited provisions. Now, the reason I tell you that is, another discussion that we had before entering agreement was, hey, we don't know what the cost is going to settle into. We generally know that it takes time for people to utilize the service, but 12 months, 18 months into it, we'll take a measurement and see what the cost of this is. And so the preliminary indications are roughly, you know, 9% increase in the disposal component. And what we'll do is mid-year this year, we'll sit down, do a rate study, bring staff into it, or be invited by staff to present that information, and then just show, here's where we are. Now, here's my expectation, and I've experienced this two times prior. It really does take a number of years before the community fully recognizes having used this service. And so there's a slight uptick. I asked our operations manager, "How many of the households do you think are using it?" He came back with, "Well, maybe 5%." Now, don't get hung up on the number, just take that as a low percentage. And so it has not been that impactful to the routes. They're starting to fail it, but not to a large degree. In that kind of range, true with my experience, it's going to take a couple of years. And so we'll measure at the end, at the middle of this year, and present, let's just say, Q3, Q4 to city staff as to what the costs are. It's not going to be dramatic. It really is going to take a number of years before it settles into whatever it settles in. So anyway, that's that. This gives, again, 9% increase in disposal for residential, 4% per commercial, and Dropbox, 4% likewise. Commercial customers, there's a slight uptick in the amount of them. Residential customers, it's been flat. Dropbox, we put that up there, disregard it. That's really commercial activity, and it's always volatile. It's not subscription. It's sometimes construction projects typically. So that's volatile. And likewise, maybe just to show that that dropped to zero with stopping that program. We always like to highlight partnerships with the city. If there's any big, large, bulky items, we'll run them around and get it picked up. We increased the service level to the 96 gallon cart, and there's a listing of city departments that have provided solid waste collection, too, as part of the contract without charge. The last little piece, a reminder of the provisions of the new contract. What I like about it, and I think it provides good flexibility for the city, is it has both internal and external triggers. External triggers, every year, we talk about those. Annual adjustment, annual adjustment, CPI to the service component, and then periodic adjustments, such as fuel surcharge, which hasn't happened, probably won't happen here, and disposal fees. So those two external things have an automatic mechanism to account for it. And then on the other side, with internal triggers, which is new to the contract, is a general rate case, a methodology, basically identical to what the state does to assess rates. rates and to make sure that they are appropriate, fair, and justified through a committee process. And the reason I bring that up is that's what we will start to do mid-year when we measure it, and then request a meeting to present, here's what the cost of services through that mechanism there. And likewise, let's say three years in the future, the city says, hey, let's put recycling in. Okay, the provisions are already within the contract to say how to do that. Rate adjustment. So every year we talk about CPI. As a result of the CPI, the total average change in the rates is going to go up 2.46%. The service component, the component of basic disposal provides is 2.56. The landfill fee is going up on January 1st, that is going up 2.3%. And I wanted to take the time in this slide to point something that I think is very good. There's been an evolution the last number of years with the City of Walla Walla and the forward thinking and management of the landfill, and I wanted to point out, it's nice that the City of Walla Walla, they passed a resolution, I think last year, that pretty much said, for the next six years, here's what the rates are going to be. So they've given us forward guidance and plan, and that allows the communities and us to plan a good steady increase, but it's now known. And so I wanted to commend Walla Walla for that. That's nice to have that forward. Always pick a couple sample rates, 96 gallon cart goes up 2.4%, 51 cents, commercial four-yard container, roughly $7, then the disposal fee up a couple dollars. Closing items, unlimited pickup, provisions of the contract, bulky items, call them into us, we'll get it picked up, CPI adjustment in the middle of the year, the cost of service for the study. With that, if there's any questions?
Questions, Mr. Peterson?
I just really wanted to say that I really appreciated the little flyer thing that came with the new thing. It's up on my refrigerator, and I look at it because I'm like trying to clean stuff out, and I'm like, what can I do with this? And so, it's really, I really appreciated that.
I appreciate this comment, thank you.
So the volume's up, and you, and part of that, or half of that, is probably the recycling. It used to go to recycling, now it's going to the landfill, and so that's part, half of the percentage. The other thing though, you guys have gained in efficiency with going with the larger containers, and that was something that you requested. And of course, a larger container, I'm guessing, maybe you saw this in other communities, the larger you make it, the more we want to fill it. And so, I know, yeah, to an extent, so to a degree. It's easier to put things, yeah. Of course, you know also, well, you're picking up refrigerators and things like that perhaps that are heavier. The last question though I had is, we've made it, I believe, a mandatory for the larger businesses to utilize your service, and that is to have an impact on the total tonnage, I'm guessing. Is that an accurate statement?
Yeah, yeah. And I appreciate the reminder when we go through and look at the numbers, we'll dive into the commercial sector to see what impact that's going to have. Absolutely.
Okay, yeah, thank you.
Absolutely.
Other questions? Mr. Peterson, thank you so very much, as always. It's a pleasure that you're here and your explanation is so.
Oh, I forgot. Excuse me. Tin cans, should they go inside or down by the trash can? I've had people ask me, and I don't know.
Yeah, so tin cans in regards to which?
Cans, yeah, pop cans and things like that.
Yeah, inside.
Inside, okay.
Inside, absolutely inside.
Thank you.
I will make a comment that people can recycle on their own.
That's right.
At, on, whatever, 513.
Absolutely. All right. Mayor, Council, I always want to say thank you.
Thank you.
I appreciate the opportunity, I mean, your statements, so thank you very much.
So we, thank you, Mr. Peterson. We do have a public hearing, I'd like to open a public hearing on basic disposals and report. Anybody wishing to address the College Place City Council on that, please step to the microphone, state your name and address. Once again, anybody wishing to address the College Place City Council on the basic disposal and report, please step forward and state your name and address. And one final time, anybody wishing to address the College Place City Council on the basic disposal and reports, please step forward and state your name and address. Seeing none, is there a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
It's been moved by Ms. Selby, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Bobbin. Any further discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Public hearing is closed. Thank you very much. Mr. Rosatello, College Place Walla Walla intertie. And I'd like to introduce Mr. Davil Shalman, his wife, who's here along with Mr. Rosatello with the intertie agreement. Thank you very much, Mr. Shalman, for coming to our humble meeting.
It's a pleasure, Peter, sir, thank you.
Mr. Rosatello.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. Well, this is an intertie agreement between both the systems, City of College Place and City of Walla Walla. This went through once before, but there is just some minor clarification and some language. So there's a termination clause, so it could be terminated anytime by either party with 60 calendar days written notice, or 90 calendar days if we were in arrears or default on a payment. It has a definition as to what is an emergency, and then coordinating with City of Walla Walla to open up a said connection. And then the interties has a map of the set of locations, and that the design standards for facilities needs to meet with the American Association of Water Works. Yeah, and it just says, has payment criteria, so 30 days from the billing date, and it's the residential charges, so this was a very good agreement. First up in agreements back, we have one with Walla Walla University as well, so this is recommended for passage, and it has passed Walla Walla's city council.
Questions for Mr. Rosatello or Mr. Shalman? Seeing none, is there a motion? Mr. Peterson?
Mayor, I'd move to approve a resolution number 18-040 authorizing the mayor to execute the intertie agreement between the City of College Place and the City of Walla Walla.
Second. It's been moved by Mr. Peterson, seconded by Ms. Nahagan. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much for coming, Mr. Shalman.
Thank you, Your Honor. May I make a question?
Oh, please.
I'd just like to make a brief statement. I apologize to the council that has taken this long. I know we caused great grief for your wonderful city administrator on the delays. I assure you the delays were on this meeting, and the time you needed to offer to the city to charge them. I'm sorry. I'm sorry about it's done, and as I assured my office, if it should have been a per, we would have opened up that intertie.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
It's great to have a great partner.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Kilmore, temporary refund transfer.
So you probably recall last summer, Mr. Goring dropped forward our request for a temporary $100,000 transfer from our water operating fund to our water capital fund, and that was in order to bridge a cash flow gap between funding our well projects and receiving reimbursement through the drinking water state revolving fund loan program. Well, because things were delayed, on the Department of Health's side of things, not on ours, we ended up exceeding the need for that $100,000, and it looks like we're going to need about $20,000 more to bridge the gap in September. In October, we actually received our first reimbursement on the loan, and we also drew down the remaining balance on the water revenue funds from last year, and also deposited those into the capital fund. So we have plenty of cash flow in there now, but we're getting ready to close September, and it looks like there's going to be a slight shortfall, and so I need to come forward to you and ask for authorization to transfer another $20,000 between operating and capital funds.
Questions for Ms. Kilmore? Seeing none, is there a motion?
I move that we approve the transfer funds from Water Operating Fund 400 to Water Capital Fund 431 to meet ongoing water system consolidation and the well number two relocation project costs.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved by Ms. Selby, seconded by Mr. Peterson. Any further discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Ms. Kilmore. Ms. Goring, notice of intent to withdraw from the City's Insurance Association of Washington.
All right, so we've talked about it a couple times before, it was presented, I think that last time, maybe before, and then also discussed at the last workshop. We, I'm here tonight just to seek your approval to send notice to CIAW that we would like or intended withdrawal for the year 2020.
Questions for Ms. Kilmore?
Real quickly, this is a year into the future, isn't it? I mean, a year and, yeah. The funding for the difference of this, what are the thoughts, although I'm not looking for a definite, definitive answer right now, what are the thoughts for funding this gap? Where'd that come from?
I mean, I did some initial number crunching, and with the trainings that we're paying for out of our own pocket right now, as well as the risk management grants, compared to some projects I looked into that would fill that, it pretty much comes out as a wash at the end, which is why we were looking at this in the first place. Because you get what you pay for.
Thanks.
Other questions for Ms. Kilmore or Mr. Peterson? Is there a motion?
I move the motion to approve resolution 18-039 authorizing the city to set notice of withdrawal through the City's Insurance Association of Washington.
Second.
It's been moved by Ms. Nysel, seconded by Mr. Dickerson. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Ms. Kilmore.
Thank you.
And it looks like I have the next agenda. As we discussed at the workshop, the Walla Walla County is looking at contracting with the Blue Zones project to do a pilot to see whether or not our, the Dallow area running from Milton Free Water to Dayton would be a candidate for initiation of a Blue Zones project. The scoping visit is a $50,000 visit to take a look at, to take a look to see whether the community is ready to engage in some longer-term change in helping to improve the quality of life and the lifespan of our residents. The reason that I think the city's appropriately involved in this is when we look at the other blue zone cities, there's been a major investment in city infrastructure coming from outside sources as we, as these get developed. The initial scoping is $50,000. The actual project running over five to seven years is typically being running between one and a half and $2 million, classically paid for by foundations and grants that look at how do we deal with diet, exercise, community facilities, and reorganizing how cities look and feel and how their citizens use that. I think it's a great opportunity for the, for the city to buy into this. We have a large population in the city that I think is well tied into the concepts involved in this. Is, is one of the, quote unquote, blue zones along with the island of Sicily, the Okinawa Peninsula in Costa Rica, that have people living to the age of 100,000 or next to the rest of the world. But the efforts of this institution to implement this has gone reasonably well. The cities, there are two cities in Oregon, there are Blue Zone projects, one in the Dows, the other in Climas Falls. Their largest city is Fort Worth, Texas, it just got, just became a Blue Zone city, and the newspapers made it, they're going to take your stake away from you. And Fort Worth, Texas, that's what's taken. But the state of Iowa is a Blue Zone state, there are 24 cities in the state of Iowa that are attempting to become Blue Zones.
Iowa beef.
Iowa beef. And their initial project city is the city in Minnesota that made a dramatic change in how the city was structured and the quality of life in the city. I think it's a worthwhile investment. $10,000 from the City of College Place, $10,000 from the City of Walla Walla, $1,000 from Walla Walla County, and $20,000 from Adventist Health through Walla Walla University. Questions? Did you say we're the first city?
In Washington.
First, well, we would be, we would be the only city in Washington looking at this. State of Oregon is about three years into this, and like the closest one is the Dows. After the scoping visit, there'll be a field trip to the Dows to take a look at how they're doing prior to the time making a commitment to actually doing this. The other one's Climas Falls, and we may go to Climas Falls as well. Ms. Selby?
What fund would this $10,000 come out of?
It's current expense, it's a chemical fund. I find it's exciting, you know, it's one of these things where, I think you'd mentioned earlier, that also there's some interest by the large healthcare groups in the United States. This is something that, as far as, as they try to tackle with diabetic education and on and on, this seems to fit into the future from what I've seen in some of those documents, where they're engaged with this and what the future could be for a lot of us.
Classically, these have been funded by healthcare conglomerates. I've already talked to the folks at Providence, they're looking at how this fits in with theirs. I think it fits in well with Adventist Health's commitment, with the sale of, with the sale of Walla Walla General Hospital. I believe that this community, if anybody can make a success, given the, both the commitment to the community, the volunteer spirit within the valley, I think would be a good candidate. Like I told people before, this is a community where you ask them to do something, they don't ask you why, they ask you how hard. Yeah, we have a reasonable, we have a reasonable budget. I don't believe that the governmental commitment to funding in the longer term, this is, this basically is a scoping visit, we see it seem. Make a motion. Mr. Cleveland had a comment?
Question. So this is doing a study, what kind of data are they collecting?
They'll, they'll actually be looking at the commitment of the community to be involved in this and commitment of the community to fund. So actually, they'll be talking to y'all, as well as the other governmental entities, hospitals, volunteer organizations. It's not a data, they'll be doing data collection ahead of time, but this is really, the visit really is about how willing are you to do this? Do you have the will and the power? Because this, it isn't just about money, it's about commitment to change. Okay, I have moved that we authorize the mayor to execute agreement for the Blue Zone project study in the amount of $10,000.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Dickerson, seconded by Ms. Selby. Is any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much for your confidence. Ms. Nysel, lodging tax advisory commission recommendations for 2019 funding.
Hi. The lodging tax committee received two responses. The Lodging Tax Committee received two responses to the request for proposals for lodging tax funds in 2019, both of them from the city. One for the ad, another ad in the Visit Walla Walla, Walla Walla Visitor Guide, and one for entertainment assistance for the Freedom Festival in July. And the Lodging Tax Committee reviewed both applications and chose to recommend to the council that they approve the recommended funding of 1,600 towards the visitor guide and 2,200 towards advertising and entertainment for the Freedom Festival event.
Questions for Ms. Nysel? Is there a motion?
I'd move to approve funding recommendations made by the Lodging Tax Advisory Commission to award the City of College Place requested projects an amount of $1,600 towards a Walla Walla Visitor Guide advertisement and $2,200 toward advertising and entertainment for the 2019 Freedom Festival event.
Second. It's been moved by Mr. Peterson, seconded by Ms. Nahagan. Any further discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Ms. Nysel.
Thank you.
Mr. Rizzatello, street tree listing.
Thank you, Mayor. All this does is it has a list for various trees that are approved for planting in the city right of the way. It really helps in the future because if you have incorrect trees, they become a pain to maintain and then they cannot peep sidewalks and there's also a variety of issues over time. The code that you all passed a while ago, the, that park code, it had language in there essentially authorizing said tree list, except we never got around to creating one. So the Park Arbor and Recreation Advisory Board worked on this list and recommended that the city council adopt this. A lot of this list comes from City of Walla Walla where Jim Dumont, who's our park board chair, was the park and rec director over there prior retire.
Questions for Mr. Rizzatello?
Motion to approve resolution number eighteen dash zero four one establishing the College Place official street tree listing.
It's been moved by Mr. Cleveland. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Bobbitt. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. I'd love to see more dialogue. Thank you. Ms. Nahigan?
I saw Mary Lee Tolle this morning and she said she has a 15-foot blue spruce she'd like to give to the city.
On the, the street reports, capital facility plan, IT plan, equipment replacement plan, six-year booklets, Mr. Rizzatello?
Okay, I'm not going to read over all this because we went through it extensively. A public works committee, talked about the finance committee. It's been administrative reports last couple meetings, but please just look over it. The six-year booklet form, format of the equipment replacement plan and capital facility plan is all there. I'm formatted in a booklet form of the IT strategy, so they'll be released shortly, but right now the summary spreadsheet is there right now. As far as the capital facility plan, just the salient points of this is that the wastewater trunk line that would serve that McCurnan Christianson site as well as the Meadowbrook area and Country Estates, that is in here. And the total on that's six and a half million. A lot of this, I believe we can get through various .09 grants from the county port, curb community economic revitalization board, as well as through developers we've been talking to, but on the front end, there will be a bond issue of some sort. We're just trying to figure out what the gap is. Well, number one, number two, that's ongoing. Pretty soon there will, there will be the drilling contract that will go before you all for said wells, so that's in here. Wastewater treatment plant, engineering for, in 2019 for 300,000, that's in there. C Street, that's a two and a half million. That's dependent on grants from Transportation Improvement Board, which we'll know by the end of the week because they're going to be giving announcements for all of that. And then Lions Park, which is 2 million for both the pond and then outright revitalization. Projects in here are ranked high, medium, and low. High means it needs to happen no matter what, medium indicates that there's time, but it's not an emergent need. And then low is really driven by the availability of grants or how quickly development happens here in the valley.
Questions for Mr. Rizzatello?
You know, I would just say we've, we've looked through this report several times now. Just, you know, kudos to Mike and his staff. It was well done. It was complete. We've discussed about that it's forward leaning, forward looking, sort of being reactive. And yeah, Mike, everyone did a great job on that and it was very, very well done. Your utilization of some of the videos, I think that, is it NPR or PBS had, maybe we had access to, makes, makes the town, yeah, beautiful document, very professionally done. Thank you so much.
It's only 91 million dollars.
What's 91 million dollars a month change?
It's only money. But as, as, as we pointed out, if we don't plan for it, it'll never happen. It would just get more expensive.
Yep.
Mr. Rizzatello, Columbia Rural Electric franchise?
This is fairly straightforward. This is, just please look over, it's a franchise renewal for Columbia Rural Electric Association. Their old franchise lapsed, so been in negotiations with Scott Peters over a new franchise. Luckily, negotiations are, they're brief now because everything is in our franchise code, so it makes it quite a bit easier to get these done. So that's why if you look through it, it just references the code section, so it's fairly straightforward. Everything's in a code ten-year term, just like it says in the code, so take a look at it, then it'll come back for hopefully approval of the upcoming meeting.
Questions?
Well, they've been operating on an expired agreement here last year?
From what we identified, yeah. We did some research and yeah. So we're rectifying that, so.
Any further questions? Ms. Nysel, farmer and artisan market handbook.
Hi. So for 2019, we did some feedback surveys, asked some different questions about what the community and what the vendors liked, and from that we came up with a handbook to give some consistent rules and a change in the fee structure to hopefully help with some of the funding for different things at the market. And I'd just like you guys to review this stuff. We would like to, the Economic Development Tourism and Events Commission has approved it, and I sent it out for feedback from some of the vendors. I've only had one call back from them and it was, they were asking questions on how to fill out the application because they were signing up for next year. Told them they needed to wait until you guys approve it. So if you have any questions, I'd like you to look at it. We'd like to bring the fees back for approval so we could incorporate them into our fee structure for, our fee resolution for 2019.
And we'll be doing it at Lions Park, actually.
Lions Park. Start to finish.
Yep.
Yes.
Thank you, Ms. Nysel.
Thanks.
Mr. Rizzatello, in our local agreement between the City of College Place and College Place School District?
Thank you. This is just basically an agreement for agreements. It says that the school district and the city will play well together and work on cooperative funding for potential park facilities or things like that. Really, the purpose behind this is as the city grows, in essence, there's opportunities for both agencies to get grants, especially for potential new park out by the McCurnan Christianson site. We will score extra points with having an agreement like this on the books. It is also going through College Place School District, same time it's going through this body. There is language in here, we're at a later time if they so choose. Both the university, Walla Wall Bailey Academy, and Rogers can opt into this upon approval of both the public school district and us.
Nice.
They were approached as part of the initial agreement and have declined to participate.
But it's nice of us to offer.
State and federal legislative agenda, Mr. Rizzatello?
Thank you, Mayor. We went over this at length at the last workshop. Basic premise with the legislative agenda for this upcoming year is 2019 is a heavy lift year. That is where the biennial budget is created and pushed through. Naturally, some of the things we're going to try to defend is the Public Works Assistance Account, which backs a lot of the projects, as well as Transportation Improvement Board, which funds a lot of projects. Another thing is reauthorization of economic development programs such as local infrastructure financing tool and local revitalization financing, if those programs are brought back in the books, on the books. Really, with what's going on in South College Place, a lot of that we could recapture with that tool and it'll essentially pay for itself with that tool. So that's very important. Another one is multifamily property tax exemption. Quirk in the state law is that if you're a county C or if you're a Growth Management Act, basically mandated county not opt-in or above 20,000, you can participate. Unfortunately, this county was opt-in and then we aren't a county C and our population isn't 20,000, so even though Walla Wall can participate in that program, we can. So it's really just evening the playing field. Also dealing with the property tax statute issue and then trying to get further clarification on recycling program and additional funding for basic law enforcement academy. Our big project priorities, which is on the left-hand side of the sheet, is wastewater treatment plant, that's very expensive, but I believe there's opportunity to potentially get some of that curtailed back because of some efficiencies with our flow meter down there. C Street corridor, South College Place, that trunk line I've mentioned, and then separating the pond and the overall renovations to Lions Park, so. And this is a sheet we're able to take to all the, all the agency heads and legislators and get stuff done.
Questions for Mr. Rizzatello? When we'll do a resolution next meeting?
Yep.
The, this may be one of the most powerful things that we do for the state as it, as it goes forward, so.
Yeah.
Please take a look and if there's anything you think we need to change, please let Mr. Rizzatello know. And finally, the Walla Wall University City Survey.
So this is a survey that the students from Walla Wall University conducted last year. They essentially interviewed 329 residences, statistically valid. The students broke it up by zone into five zones, and there's many questions of which is the general feel for the library and then if you're for a library, are you willing to pay for it? And the results are broken up by the five zones and then overall as well. So as far as the overall results, 68% of those responded as shown in page 41, would like a library. 56% of the 68% are willing to pay for it. Most of the zones are in the higher 50 percentile marks or 60% as far as the willing to pay for it question. The only zone which equips that is Zone Four, which is the zone that's encompassed by the Highland Park villages, the Garrison Creek and Garrison Creek Heights neighborhood. That was basically the 80%, they wanted, and then 62% of the 80 were willing to pay for it. So that one zone equips the other five. The other remaining zones were fairly in line with each other. So please take a look at the study and let us know if you have any concerns, questions, comments, or the like.
Questions for Mr. Rizzatello? There are no informational reports. This call gave you an analysis of the activities around voting. You know, we're done for now, but two years from now, this will all be.